He's a little bit under the weather, so he's not going to be shaking hands this evening. So you have the pleasure, if you want to, you can shake my hand. I'm not sick that I'm aware of. So we have four groups that we are going to recognize here this evening. Our first group I'd like to recognize is our girls' cross-country. The first honorees we'd like to invite up for our recognition tonight are members of our White Bear Lake Area High School Girls' Cross-Country Team who qualified to compete at the state meet. First is Maggie Blanding, who was also all-conference. Melanie Pankow, who also was all-conference. Matty Vikurki, who was also all-conference and academic all-state. Assistant Coach Christine Volkman. Assistant Coach Sue Whirl. All right, if we can have you come back in front of the board and have your picture taken. All right, next, we will invite our White Bear Lake Area High School Boys' Cross-Country Team, which also qualified to the state meet. Jordan Haug, also honorable mention and all-conference. Isaac Mariama, all-conference and academic all-state. Ernie Matson, honorable mention, all-conference, academic all-state. Ben McLaughlin, honorable mention, all-conference. Max Nelson, conference champion, which is the first for White Bear since 1999, and all-state 18th place. Logan Tantu, all-conference. Sam Vikurki, honorable mention, all-conference. Coach Dan Allen. Coach Matt Mavison. Coach David Percival. David also was the Boys' Cross-Country Section 4AA Assistant Coach of the Year. And Head Coach Dan Kavasich was also Boys' Cross-Country Section 4AA Head Coach of All right, congratulations. Gentlemen, if we have you come back up to get your picture taken. Parents in the audience, please stand also to be recognized.
It said on the back, right there, too. There you go. Yeah, perfect. Everyone find their window and they can see me. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Chee! Oh, is that a few here? No. And then I just step out of the way for anyone else who wants to take a picture.
Okay, our next group of students to be recognized tonight are adapted soccer athletes. This group qualified for the state competition. Congratulations to Jess Binsfeld. Christian Dettinger. Cole Crawl. Luca Lindsay. Annie Murnan. Maggie Murnan. Assistant Coach Abby Olson. Assistant Coach Nikki Sherpal Edstrom. And Head Coach Joe Dustin. All right, team, if we can have you come back up for your picture. Parents also in the audience, please stand to be recognized.
There you go. Very nice. Oh, yeah, perfect. Yes, great. Everyone can see me, and the camera can see you. Here we go. One, two, three. Chee! Oh, there we go. Now I can see you. One, two, three. I'll take a few more in here. And then I'm going to step out of the way for anyone else who wants to take a picture.
All right, congratulations again. And finally tonight, we recognize our Unified Flag Football Team members who won the state competition. Congratulations to the following students. Tavis Dean. Bryson Deering. Dominique Kittleson. Chantel McNeil. Jeffrey Parnell. Coach Carl Jacobson. All right, if we can have coaches and team members come back up for your picture. Also, parents in the audience, please stand to be recognized as well, too.
There we go. Very nice. Perfect. There we go. All right. One, two, three. Chee! I'm going to take a few here. Okay, now I'm going to move out of the way for anyone else.
All right, congratulations again to all teams and members. This concludes our recognition ceremony tonight. We have cookies. Please grab some cookies if you haven't done so already. You're welcome. Stick around for the board meeting, which will begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you so much, everybody, for joining us this evening.
Welcome to this warm Minnesota evening. I'd like to call the order Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chapman.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Fahy.
Here.
Mullin.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
And Beloit.
Here.
All right. Would you all please stand and take off your hats and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before us, we have an agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Allison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. All the, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Motion adopted. We also have before us a consent agenda, and these are our sundry items that come before us on a monthly basis. And one of the things that we're very, very fortunate to do, have, is the generosity of the community, and this month is no exception with the number of gifts that they give us. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion, Ms. Fahy?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. This will require a roll-call vote.
Chapman.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Fahy.
Aye.
Mullin.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Okay, we have before us a consent agenda. This is the public forum portion of our meeting. We ask that we, if you're wanting to speak, that you fill out a white card on the table, present it to the dais. I have two cards this week. Mr. Ponton, please come up and you can address the school board. Yes, sir. Please do me a favor, state your name and your address for the record.
Sounds good. Ryan Ponton, 1906 Clarence Street, White Bear Lake. I just wanted to address the school board and say congratulations on getting the bond referendum passed. I know this is a big deal. This is a lot of work that was put in on each year's behalf. I really appreciate all of the hard work that you did on that, the back work leading up to this, as far as being thorough with getting people from the community in, getting their input on how to move forward the best for the community. And I just really wanted to say thank you so much. I've got two kids in the district, second grade and kindergarten at Birch Lake, and I'm super, super excited for their future, for what we're going to be doing with the schools. And my daughter Evelyn over here, she doesn't quite realize the impact of what this referendum is going to do for her and her sister, but I know that they'll be excited once they, once they see what we're going to do. So thanks a lot. I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys do every month, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, I have another one for Mr. Fry, Jordan Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. My name is Jordan Fry. I live at 6035-135th Street North in Hugo. I also, like Mr. Ponton, wanted to just come here and say thank you for all your hard work. I'm super impressed by the work that you've done leading up to this. I mean, if we want to have kids that are going to excel and be the next generation, we have to have leaders like yourself to take the bold step that you did and putting us in a good position to be able to do this as well. So I also have two children. This is Maverick. He's my youngest. He goes to Matoska. And I have a seventh grader, Joshua, who's at Sunrise. They both will be affected one way or another, especially Maverick. And so I just want to say thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, please.
Can I just say something that really it's, Dr. Kasmatzek was really the lead on this and cabinet people sitting there. So the board, we certainly supported it. We were behind the scenes, but Dr. Kasmatzek really took the lead on this in terms of, in just the two years he's been here, the new strategic plan, the facilities plan. He and Mr. Wald and cabinet members spent a lot of time in public meetings answering questions. Our communications department compiling information that went on the district website. So as a board member, I would like to thank all the people that were involved in the planning committees, our Vote Yes group that put in countless hours working on this for the benefit of all our students and families in our district. So, thank you.
You're here. Thank you. I do not have any more cards up here. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our first informational item, C1. The district's Equity and Achievement Committee update. Dr. Gillespie, is this you?
It is, yep.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you, School Board Chairman Mullin and school board members and Dr. Kasmatzek. It is a great honor for me to be here today to talk to you about some of the work that we've been engaged in since the beginning of the school year around equity and also remind you of some of the foundational work that we laid last year in the school year. It has been a large privilege of mine to be able to lead this work at the district level and really support the amazing work that's occurring in our buildings. If you remember, Strategy 5 of our strategic plan calls for us to, that we will embrace all cultures with humility and respect, and that really has been the foundation of our work around equity since the strategic plan was finalized. And then as I've worked to try to help revitalize our district equity team and move us forward in terms of making sure that we're making progress in this area. Last year, April 2019, a committee of 30 stakeholders developed our equity commitment. You should have it in front of you on our, on a laminated card that will be with you at each one of your meetings. We've, Dr. Kasmatzek, many of us on cabinet and building principals did presentations at the end of last year. Dr. Kasmatzek grounded us in this at convocation this year. And then we did presentations at every single one of our buildings as part of the bond referendum, but also centered our work in the equity commitment. And really, this has served as the foundation for our work as we look at the District Equity and Achievement Committee that I've been working with this year. So our equity commitment is, to nurture the whole student, we disrupt systemic inequities by recognizing, honoring, and embracing all cultures with humility and respect. And so we've been centering our work around that. It is the foundation of what we do here, and as we continue to move forward in these very exciting times, it will continue to be the center of our work. And really, we've been talking as leaders how it's a responsibility for each one of us, whether we have a formal leadership role or an informal leadership role, to make sure that we're committing to that and reminding ourselves of that work and that commitment continuously. Additionally, we adopted a four-way equity decision-making protocol at that same meeting in April of 2019. And I should mention that process that we followed in constructing the equity commitment and adopting the four-way equity decision-making protocol is the same exact process that we've used in constructing our strategic plan and our building plan. So it's definitely participatory decision-making and multiple stakeholders from students, community members, and staff and administration. District building and site leaders have been using this protocol as decisions are made this year. So we've really been working on how do we make sure that we embed this process when we're making decisions on the smaller level, you know, day in and day out for students, and then also on the larger systemic level. Many of our leaders are giving staff presentations as well to really think about how can this equity commitment and this four-way equity decision-making protocol impact our teachers as they collaborate together and our other staff members. And really, again, the emphasis is it's all of our responsibilities to make sure. Dr. Kasmatzek has been very clear in his vision around equity, and then how do we all embrace as a community and a district to make sure that we're utilizing this protocol. So the four-way equity decision-making protocol has four questions and really asks us to consider the decisions we're making. How do they provide opportunities for students who may have been marginalized by our system in the past or have been marginalized by our system in the past? How does this help ensure equitable access for all? How does this help to eliminate barriers based on race, ethnicity, gender, disability, age, or other protected groups? And how does this ensure that the same rigorous standards by, excuse me, the same rigorous standards for academic performance exist for all students? And so we will continue to have these conversations. It's not one that you can say check. We have that protocol. We, it causes us to think differently about decisions, and I, and along with my colleagues, we've all been encouraging and holding each other accountable to making sure that we use this protocol. And I know that you, as large decision-makers in our system, will also do the same. So this year's priorities are based in Strategy 5 and really looking at two large areas. Specific result, 5.2 calls for our school communities to be culturally responsive. And so I'm working with our district equity and achievement team, which has members from across the district, a couple of school board representatives as well, to really discuss what will our equity team structure be for our school buildings, giving principals the autonomy to choose maybe what that exactly looks like, but making sure that we're accomplishing the same goals and understand the why for needing such a structure. So we've started those conversations and really been partnering strongly with Equity Alliance Minnesota, which has been invaluable to me, especially being new in this role. The other strategy that we're working on, and I'm not going to read them all, but essentially all of these specific results encompass types of professional development and learning that we're going to provide and engage in with our staff, students, and employees around how we become even more culturally responsive and ensure that all of our students and families feel that our system, they are a part of our system and our system reflects them. So this work, we just had a really engaging conversation as a task force recently with Equity Alliance consultant, and we're going to bring a large group of students and staff together to really talk about how we move forward with this strategy. So additional priorities is continue to build opportunities for staff leadership. So we have our district equity team and then two task force work that people can be involved in. We're looking at an equity assessment to be conducted over the next few months, looking at how we increase student leadership opportunities. We have many different student leadership groups that have been able to participate in some recent student learning opportunities, and how can we continue to make sure their voice is part of our system? And then finally, continuing to strengthen our collaboration with Equity Alliance.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for Dr. Gillespie? Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to our next informational item, C2, the superintendent's report. Dr. Kasmatzek, you.
Thank you, Chair Mullin.
Shot.
Give it a shot. Jennifer, you might have to pinch-hit for me here. All right, before tonight's meeting, we recognize students who received the following state honors. Members of our girls' cross-country team who qualified for state, the entire boys' cross-country team, which qualified for state, the adapted soccer team, which qualified for state, and our unified flag football team, which won state. So congratulations to those students. It's worth to note, again, that just one week ago today, orders approved our referendum request with 57.4% yes votes. We're incredibly grateful for this vote of confidence and support in our schools, our staff, and our students. Now we can begin planning our, planning to build our future. Funds will be used to address projected enrollment growth throughout the district, provide safe, secure, and healthy learning environments for all students through investments in our aging facilities and infrastructure, increase opportunities for students by creating a single unified grades nine through 12 high school, and create flexibly designed learning spaces to support student-centered instruction. Thank you, White Bear Lake Area Schools community. We have a lot to do, and you will hear from us very soon on what the process will be moving forward. All right, schools and programs throughout the district honored veterans yesterday in various ways, from ceremonies to classroom visits and multi-generational events to heartfelt notes and signs. Thank you, community members, for all you add to our students' learning experience. Your service in so many ways is appreciated. This year's Fall Musical Aida starts this week, and tickets are currently on sale for the public at the district website. Shows will be performed November 15th and 16th and November 21 through 23, matinees on the 16th and 23rd. The November 16th matinee will have an American Sign Language interpreter and will be free for senior citizens. Seniors should reserve tickets through the regular ticket process. All right, November recognitions. The following month, weekend day celebrations are being recognized in November. Geography Awareness Week, Veterans Day, School Psychology Awareness Week, American Education Week, Education Support Professionals Day, National Parental Involvement Day, Thanksgiving Break, and Thanksgiving Day. And finally, it is important to remember that the emergency school closing information, in case there is a need for it. If winter weather is so severe that schools need to be closed, parents will also be alerted in three ways as soon as a decision is made. A school messenger phone message and email will be sent to all parents. Those who have opted in to receive text messages will be alerted in that way as well. A message will be posted on the district's homepage at www.isd624.org. Messages will be posted on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. Always assume schools are open and in session unless you hear or see differently from an official district source. All right, and now I turn it over for our student liaison update.
Okay, thank you. Happy November. Since yesterday was Veterans Day, I wanted to give a special thank you to all the military veterans. The weather is getting colder, and it seems like fall is over much too soon. Everyone at school is very excited to hear about the new referendum that has passed and even a little jealous about the new high school. The Fall Musical Aida opens this weekend and continues through next weekend. If you were hoping to snag some last-minute tickets, they are sold on the district website. Good luck to all the performers. You've all worked so hard. Winter sports are finally upon us in time and change for weather. The girls' hockey team started the season with a big win against Madamirai. The score is four to three. Go Bears. Another winter sports team will be competing in trials this week and in the weeks to follow, so good luck to other participants. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We will now move into our first discussion item, D1, which is the first reading of school, of three school board policies. Just so that you know, the way that the policy committee works is they continually update our policies throughout the years, and they come before two readings of the school board. So this first reading is to ask questions regarding the policies and bring them back to the district. So the policies that are up for their first reading today are Policy 410, Family and Medical Leave Policy, Policy 516, Student Medication, Policy 528, Student, Parental, Family, and Marital Status Nondiscrimination. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Is there any questions, comments, concerns regarding these three policies? No? Okay. Seeing none, they will come before, they will come back before next month's meeting for their final reading. With that, we will move into our first operational item, E1, Action on the Resolution Canvassing Returns of Votes of the School District General Election for School Board Members on November 5th, 2019. Is this?
I'll take it, Ben.
You'll take it?
Yep.
Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So, Minnesota statute requires that school districts adopt a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district special and general elections between the third and 10th day following the date of the election. So, our election attorney has provided us these documents. The results are official. Those were provided by Ramsey County Elections Manager. And so, the resolution you've had for a couple of days, so you've had an opportunity to read through it, so we would ask that you adopt the resolution that's presented here tonight.
Okay. You've heard the action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster, a second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Okay. We will now move to our second operational item, E2, Action on the Resolution Canvassing Returns of Votes of the School District Special Election Bond Referendum on November 5th, 2019. Dr. K.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Similarly, again, statute requires us to canvas returns of votes of school district special and general elections, again, between the third and 10th day following the date of the election. And these documents have been provided and reviewed by our Elections Attorney. The results are official and have been provided to us by the Ramsey County Elections Manager. So, this is the, I guess this is the final step in approving the bond referendum that we were successful with a week ago. So, I'd ask for you to consider that. The recommended action is presented there.
So, there's been a recommended action to move the approval of the Resolution Canvassing Returns of Votes for the School District Special Election as presented. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Mr. Chapman, a second by Ms. Fahy. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? This will also require a roll-call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye, aye, aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move into E3, Action on the Resolution Authorizing Insurance of the Certification of Election and Directing the School District to Perform Other Related Election Duties.
All right. Yep. I'll take this one as well, Mr. Mullen. So, this resolution has again been provided by our Elections Attorney to issue certificates of election and to allow the district to perform other election-related duties for the School District General Election. So, the resolution has been provided, and you've had a couple of days to review that. So...
So, the recommended action is for the White Bear Lake Area School Board to act to approve the resolution as presented. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along to E4, Action on the Approval of the Polling Locations for the 2020 State Primary and General Election. Is that you again, Mr. Dr. K?
Yep. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So, Minnesota statute requires a governing body of each school district to designate the locations and polling, of polling places for the following election year. It's now time for the board to approve polling places for the 2020 election year. So, and we've worked with our Ramsey County Elections Manager to arrive at this resolution, so we recommend approving it as presented.
Okay. You've heard, there's a recommendation, we recommend that the school board approve the recommendation of the polling places for the 2020 State Primary and General Election as presented. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Newmaster?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Any discussion? I have a quick question, Dr. Kazmicek. So, these will be posted a year in advance? Is that what the...
Yeah, we're required to act around this time of year.
Okay.
Yep. And this is, we do this every, every year. I believe we do this every year, yeah, around this time, so...
I know that we do it by every election. I just want to make sure that they will be presented so that everybody knows where the polling places are. They typically don't change, but I just want to make sure that...
And there've been, sometimes there's minor changes, like we've had, we had one this year that was under construction, so it had to be moved. So, I had to pass a resolution stating such, so...
Okay. Dr. Newmaster?
Are we also doing the no-school on primary days? Or we haven't really looked at that yet?
No. We haven't. We probably wouldn't do that on a primary day, but we can discuss that. We can discuss that as we talk about calendars. That primary day has not been suggested at this point, but we certainly can discuss that.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just had a question. I know we've discussed it before, but has there been any further discussions with Ramsey County Elections for other sites besides the schools?
There has been, but no progress at this point.
No.
But those will, we continue, they've certainly listened to us and understand our concerns, so we'll continue attempting, yeah. But as of now, there's no change.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Mr. Chapman?
Following up on that, any discussions with Anoka and Washington Counties since we do have part of the district in there?
We don't, we don't work directly with those counties. Ramsey County works on our behalf in having conversations with the other counties.
They coordinate with the other...
Yeah, they coordinate, yeah.
Okay.
Any other? Seeing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
All right. The motion passes. We will now move to Operational Item E5, Action on the Health Insurance Rates Effective January 1, 2020. Is this Mr. Mons?
Sure. I'll take it.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So, we met throughout the course of the year with our insurance committee, and I would like to start out with a thank you to our insurance committee because I think the committee really challenged themselves to engage in new work this year and to look at things a little bit differently, and that was greatly appreciated. There was a lot of energy behind exploring some new options for our, for our insurance plans, and I think we moved in a really positive direction. We're recommending rate increases of five and seven percent on our current HRA plan and our copay plan respectively. And then, we're also looking at a two percent increase to our dental plan. Included in that is the introduction of a new health savings account or HSA plan that will be an additional offering for our employees that offers some benefits. In addition to that, what I'd really like to talk just briefly about in terms of how we arrive at those rates, we worked hard to set a goal in terms of where would we like to be for the long-term financial health of our healthcare plans especially, in terms of what kind of a reserve target would we like to hit and maintain? And so, the recommendations that we have here tonight will allow us to make some marginal progress in attaining an eventual goal that will give us more flexibility as a district to weather particularly tough years where we might experience significant health claims so that we can kind of even out that experience and allow for better planning around our rate increases and insurance options.
Okay. We have a recommended action to move the approved the district's health and dental insurance premium rates effective January 1, 2020 as presented. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Any questions, comments, concerns? So, this is just, I just want to clarify this, that it's been vetted through, through the committee and with, and the, all of our bargaining units have representation on that committee?
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Beloit?
Do we know how this year looks in comparison to, because I know we had, was it not last year, but the year before where we had a lot of payouts? Do we know what this year looks like?
So, what I would say is, I think we had a pretty typical year, really, in terms of our experience, I would say. We beat the kind of the Twin Cities average in terms of what's happening with healthcare costs and spend by public school districts, and so, we came in a little bit under. We wanted to make sure that we're conservative with our approach to the stewardship of that reserve. So, the rates that you're seeing here are marginally higher than they would necessarily need to be. So, really, as you're looking at this in terms of relative experience, this was a pretty average year for us in terms of major claims and then claims across the board.
Then, did we come in under our targets? The rates that we had set for what we thought it was going to be?
As a self-insured plan, we're not really setting that target in that same way, I would say. It depends if we're talking about the contract that we signed or what we, what we believe we're going to experience, I suppose. So, in terms of the contract that we signed, no, we didn't come in below our guaranteed rate increase that we had signed with Preferred One. That being said, that was probably never going to happen. The contract was written in such a way to protect the district as we made a move to a new provider. And so, from that standpoint, the answer would be no, but I don't believe that we were intended to beat that prediction. Sorry, that's not terrifically clear.
I get it.
Mr. Chapman?
Did the committee support this pretty much unanimously? Yes. It did?
Yep.
Okay.
And so, all of the really substantial changes were all supported unanimously by all, all units, which is wonderful to see. And there was really good dialogue throughout the year and especially at the end as we were moving towards recommendations for the board.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second. This will require a roll-call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move into Operational Item E6, which is Action on the Acceptance of the Ryan Art Grants. Is this Dr. K?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So, again, we, we hear frequently from our, the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation. It's a wonderful organization and incredibly supportive, and so, it's our pleasure tonight to accept a couple of different sets of grants. So, the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation has approved six Ryan Art Grant Proposals with requests that these grants be formally accepted by the school district, and that we're being asked to do that tonight. So, on the following pages were the grants. I'm not going to read through them. I will, I will read the title of each, but they were Kind Hearted Kids, I've Got Talent, Making Art Fun for a Diverse Group of Learners, Color My World, Theater Production, Jungle Book Junior, and The Art of Step. So, so with that, would recommend accepting the Ryan Art Grants for the 2019-2020 school year.
So, there's a recommended action to accept the Ryan Art Grants totaling $5,519.76 from the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation as presented, and I would ask for a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion for Ms. Ellison?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the grants?
I'll just...
Go ahead. No, please, Mr. Wilson, go.
I'll just say that all of the educational foundation grants are extremely vetted. They have their own committees that investigates all of the grant applicants, what all is entailed in the grant, and it meets a very high standard of rigor to be awarded, and you can rest assured that that was the case again this time.
All right. Any other comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none, I would, this will require a roll-call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
All right. And the grants are accepted. Next is E7, which is the Action on Acceptance of the Brochus?
Brochus.
Did I get it correct this year? Good. Brochus Grants. Dr. Kazmicek?
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. I guess I would echo what Mr. Wilson just stated. I mean, if you wanted to reiterate again that these, there's a committee, and they're very thoroughly vetted, and so, the committee has forwarded these 10 brochus teaching grants to me with the request that you all, the school board, accept these. As an aside, as part of the internal process, the foundation folks work with the district administration to make sure that they're consistent with curriculum and technology and things like that. So, they've been, they've been vetted not only by foundation committee members, but also district administration has reviewed them as well to give them an nod of approval. So, so with these, again, I'll just read the title. We've got the Late Homecomer, The Guitar Club, Revamping the Apartment to Encourage Independent Living, Vinyl Cutter, Lakers Popcorn Stand, Partnering with Families to Create a Multilingual Alphabet Book, Future Ready Media Center Spaces, Touchscreens for T+ School Grounds Coffee Shop, and Document Cameras for Reading and Writing Workshops. So, there's more details about those grants if it piques anybody's interest in the board packet, but those are the, those are the grants being presented. And again, board members, you've had several days to review those, so, so you'll be accepting these 10 brochus grants from the foundation.
Okay. We've got a recommended action to accept the 10 brochus teaching grants from the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation as shown in the attached materials in the total amount of $19,447.33. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Any comments? Ms. Ellison?
I just wanted to comment on the great diversity of programs that are funded here. I mean, we've got programs at ALC, at both high school campuses, at the Transition Center, at the middle school, and therefore, programs from English Language Arts to Design Lab to Special Education. So, I think that's really tremendous that the foundation is funding such a diverse group of projects to help all of our students in different ways.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? All right. Seeing none, we will, this will require a roll-call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
require a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move into our next operational item E8, which is acceptance of the tentative agreement 2019-2021 contract, SEIU Local Unit 284 paraeducators for 2019-2021. Mr. Mons?
All right. So, I've got a series of them here, and I'm just going to start out with a blanket thank you, so I don't need to do this with each one, for the group that I worked with on the negotiations team for the district. So, that's including Tim Wald, Rebecca Edberg from my department, and then Tom Wazorick from our finance department. And I would just like to say a big thank you there because it's a lot of prep and then a lot of time at the table, and it's greatly appreciated. And then, the thank yous are going to continue because then it was greatly appreciated, the manner in which SEIU Local 284, our paraeducator group, came to the table in a really solution-oriented, positive way to move through this round of bargaining. So, that's always greatly appreciated. It's an opportunity to build relationships and build a culture, and I think that was able to happen in this round of bargaining, which is great.
All right. We, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the resolution? See, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I'd just like to direct my comments to Mr. Mons and the negotiators. All of the support units play such a critical role for the functioning of our district, contributing to the success of our district. I mean, just imagine if you didn't have the pairs, how much, you know, could the teachers really accomplish in the classrooms? And that's just one example. So, again, I want to commend you, the negotiators, in doing whatever we can that's fiscally responsible to support these groups that help us out so much in our district.
All right. Thank you. Other comments, questions? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
All right. Move to operational E9, acceptance of the tentative agreement 2019-2020-2021 contract with SEIU Local Unit 284, the secretaries and clerical employees.
So, again, I would like to offer my thanks to a group of employees that, as administrators, we work really closely with hand in hand on a daily basis, and again, a group that came to the table with a really solution-oriented and collaborative approach to problem solving. So, that's greatly appreciated. So, a thanks to our clerical and secretarial group.
Okay. We have a resolution before us, and would ask us to present, or to, there's a recommended action to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Our next agreement is E10, the acceptance of the tentative contract for 2019-2021 fiscal year with the non-affiliated and the administrative employees.
The only thing that I would note with this is just that we really tried hard to take a data-driven approach to bargaining and conversations with these groups, although it doesn't function in quite the same way as collective bargaining does. We tried, to the extent possible, to make sure that there was face time and to make sure that there was always the option of having an employee understand the why behind a recommendation that's coming to the board.
Okay. We have a resolution before us. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit, a second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing or hearing none, this will require a roll call.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
All right. Move to operational E12, which is the action of the second reading of school board policies, 601, 603, 613, 618, and 619. We'll take those in one fell swoop, do them all together. Is there a motion to adopt the policies as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. A second by Ms. Fahy. Any discussion regarding those policies? Mr. Chapman.
Just clarification. In terms of these policies, have any changes? I don't believe any changes have been made since the first reading, but I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I think there was some clarification that was required, that we needed to do, and that was done in one of the, I forget the number here. Which one was it?
Was six, policy 613.
613, yeah.
There was just...
Graduation requirements?
Some clarification to make there, but otherwise, no. I don't think they were changed. Do you recall there?
Yeah.
Being needing to be?
No, no. I was just wanting to make sure that I didn't miss anything from first reading to this one, so.
Just what was discussed here at the board meeting.
I think Mrs. Ellison brought up a question, and there was just one part that was struck out of it, the part that said the 2012-2013 school year. So, that's been struck out.
Okay. Dr. Newmaster.
I just thought, after the presentation on equity, the equity lens and the questions that we asked, as I was reading through this section, there was a nice parallel with the questions we asked for the world's best workforce, and how are we providing opportunities for kids, and how does it provide access? All of the questions eliminate barriers. So, I think that equity lens and this works together well. And if this is how we look at things, I have a lot of hope as we build the future for what we're going to do with our programming, to look at everything what best serves our kids.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Policies are adopted. All right. And then, operational E13, which is action on the approval of the architectural service agreement. Is this you, Mr. Wald?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kasmercheck, Ms. Adams. With the approval of the November 5th referendum, the school board now, or the school district will now enter into the design phase of the comprehensive facilities project. It's typical that after a referendum passes, a school district enters into an agreement with an architectural firm to provide design services. If you recall, during the pre-referendum process, we contracted with Wald Architects and Engineers, and by all accounts, Sal Bagley and Paul Apokowski, our representatives from Wald, did an outstanding job of leading that committee of 90 staff members and community volunteers to come with one, with one plan to the school board that was brought to you in May of 2018. So, first, I want to thank Sal, and Sal is here tonight. We've, Sal and Paul did just really an outstanding job of facilitating that process, and we're just really pleased with their work. So, at this, for tonight, we're recommending that the board approve a post-referendum design agreement with Wald Architects and Engineers. The contract that was in the board packet was reviewed by Jay Squires, attorney with Rupp Anderson Squires in Walzburger, who's a law firm that represents the school district. He went through it with a fine-tooth comb and agreed with the contents of this agreement. So, I think it's ready to go. Fees in the agreement range from 6% to 7.5%, depending on the type of project. So, new construction would be at a 6%. Additions to the high school would be 7%, and then other additions and renovations would be at the 7.5% rate. And those are pretty much a standard rate across the industry. We recommend approving the contract.
So, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the action? Okay. Seeing none. This will require a roll call vote. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries. Thank you. So, with that, we will, I will ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss the last action item of a property purchase. So, with that, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Make one comment before we go into closed session?
Well, how about we do it under discussion? So, I'll ask for a motion, and then I'll get a second. And then, under discussion, you can make the comment.
Okay.
All right.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ellison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Discussion. Dr. Newmaster.
Nothing to do with this, but we have momentous retirement coming up the end of December, and I want to acknowledge the work of Jean Rasmussen, who's been in this district for a long time, her long service to District 624, her expertise, her swift response, her patience with all of our endless questions about destiny as we added textbooks and all kinds of other odd things, her expertise in many programs, and it's been critical to a lot of the things that we implemented. And Jean has just been instrumental in supporting effective updates and expanding the applications that we're able to do our work with. So, I want to acknowledge that and say, I know she'll be missed, but I'm happy for her.
Dr. Newmaster, so I'm going to ask the clerk to enter that under the board forum portion, right? Just because of that piece. And we'll come back out of, we have to come back out of closed session to come back into open session, and then we'll do board forum after that also.
Usually, everybody's gone.
I understand. So, with that, is there any other discussion regarding the action? Seeing none. All in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. We will go into closed session. At this time, I will bring us back to order into open session and bring us up to action, operational item E14, which is the action on the approval of the property purchase agreement. Mr. Wald, is that you, or Dr. Kasmercheck?
All right. So, we reviewed the purchase agreements in closed session, and so at this point, we would ask you to take the recommended action that's presented in the packet.
Okay. There's a recommended action to move the approval of the purchase agreements for the property described as PID number 3003121410016, located in the city of Hugo, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, and PID number 143022120014, located in the city of White Bear Lake, County of Ramsey, State of Minnesota. The board authorizes the superintendent and assistant superintendent for finance and operations, or the superintendents designate to sign all documents necessary to acquire said properties. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Any discussion regarding the resol, or the action?
Just a simple question. Do we want to state for the record what the purpose of the purchase is? We heard it in closed session, of course.
Well, we could. We haven't necessarily done that.
Oh, okay.
But, one is for the, the one in Hugo is for future bus garage, and then the other is just a property that is, adjoins our property here on North Campus and Central Middle School site for site expansion. So, we hope that it's the first of several that we're able to acquire to expand the site, so.
All right. Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if this is at all significant, but you had just, you read into the record the PID number, and I noticed the first one, the PID number in the narrative above, is different from what's in the recommended action. It's got a 1 behind the 4. I don't know if that's significant or not. I just wanted to point that out.
Can we just make sure, I just want to make sure we have the correct PID number. So, Mr. Wald, can you just read it exact, which one is it supposed to be?
You see what I'm saying?
No, I just, yeah, we're just going to make sure. Thanks for noticing that, Mr. Chapman.
Good aye.
Just a second.
All right.
I suspect the 1 shouldn't be there.
300312141. Yeah, it's the bottom one.
So, it's the one that I did read into. So, it's PID 30032312. I'm going to read it one more time. PID number 3003121410016. Okay, that's the correct number. So, you've heard the recommended action. Is there any other discussion? Hearing, seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now at the board forum portion of the meeting. Is there anything for board forum? Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I'd just like to take this opportunity to extend my congratulations to Dr. Newmaster on her reelection to the board for the next four years, and to Mr. Arkand, who was present during the bulk of the public meeting here tonight on his election to the board.
Okay.
Angela.
And Angela.
She wasn't here.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I will second that. We are adjourned.